Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, June 6th. Chief White? Uh, pledge first, then I'll get to you. We have from Boy Scout Troop Number 608, we have Mark. Mark, can you come on up? Mark, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening? Everybody rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark. And Mark, what brings you here tonight?
Um, I'm from Troop 608, and I'm here to learn more about the city council for some merit badges.
Which merit badge are you going for?
Um, citizenship in the community and communications.
Well, that is awesome. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We appreciate it. Thank you for leading us in the pledge. Chief White?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Everybody's nice and dry, I hope.
So far. You're lucky. Thank goodness the storm went the other way.
We're looking good. We're looking good. If you'd like to join me in a word of prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we thank you for the protection that you have placed on our state today. We know there were a few tornado warnings and minor issues. We thank you, Lord. You're always watching after this great city. We thank you for all of our hard-working employees or all the preparations that they make for events like this to keep our citizens safe. Keep them safe. Keep their families safe. Keep them healthy. And, Lord, please offer our blessings and safety and protection for our veterans as we roll off a Memorial Day. We thank you so much for those that came out, Lord, and just keep them safe in all that they do. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. All righty. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's approximately 6:35 PM. It is Monday, June 6th. We have all members of council present. Our first order of business is from our Risk Management Division. It's a Risk Management Program Review and Presentation. Mr. Cobb, are you going to do the introduction on this?
Uh, yes, Mayor. We have with us tonight Mr. Haseed Bangloria from Ballator Insurance Group, and we also have Mr. Andy Cooper from World Risk Management. They're here to tell you about the city's risk management program.
Terrific.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, city manager. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here and present, uh, risk management and our initiatives. Essentially, the purpose of us being here is to at least give you an overview, a brief overview nonetheless, of the risk management initiatives that have been undertaken by the city of Oviedo with our involvement over the last several years and the results thereof. The most important thing to note here is, of course, which is important to your folks as well, is the cost reductions. We've been able to achieve over 18% in terms of a rate reduction since 2008, and that's significant in that all other costs in that same duration have gone up. What we would like to do today is, City of Oviedo is part of Public Risk Management of Florida, or a member of Public Risk Management of Florida. What that is, is a risk management consortium, or a pool of like-sized cities and counties across the state of Florida. So with that said, I guess, is there a control for the PowerPoint?
Yep. It's coming up. Technical challenges.
There it goes. Something happened there. Okay. Okay. It's not cooperating perfectly, but, um, okay. Just roll back to the first slide if you don't mind. So essentially, PRM was established in 1987. It started off with eight members, eight cities that in primary, across the, in the state of Florida, and today has grown to over 50 members. A primary objective being, of course, lower costs, enhanced coverages, loss control, and essentially, risk management services, stability of insurance costs, and the fact that it's self-governed. And all of those principles are still maintained today. Go on to the next slide, please. PRM was formed to manage differently from other trusts in the state. There are other trusts in the state, however, PRM feels that it is different. And what makes us different is that, first of all, it is focused on risk management and loss control, and focused on driving the claims down. We are not a claims, a political advocacy organization or legislative initiatives. We're focused solely on risk management and insurance. That's why we feel we are the best at it. PRM strives itself, or prides itself, in long-term relationships, and with that said, City of Oviedo has been a part of PRM since 1998, so a long 17-year, 17, 18-year relationship that continues forward. PRM and its members, every year, on an annual basis, we go out and we pursue quotes from alternative insurance carriers and markets. That's part of how we keep your costs, your insurance costs, as well as other cities and counties' costs competitive. We do that every year. Currently, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 or 25 different insurance carriers that participate in the city's program, and every year, we do market that and introduce competition to ensure that those costs remain competitive over time. I think with that, I'll pass it over to Andy.
Yeah, I think with this one, so as Steve said, PRM started in 1987. Oviedo's been a member since 1998. We have PRM, who have their own staff who work just for you, the members, and then we have Gallic Basset, who do the claim servicing as well for you, and WRM, World Risk Management, with a broker. We place the insurance for PRM. And this will give you an idea of the coverages we have. Very quickly, the property coverages. We insure all your buildings, your contents, property in the open, et cetera. We do it on a blanket basis, and we have the broadest coverage that you can actually purchase out there, because we place over 2.4 billion values with the insurance carriers. One thing we'd like to say as well, with knowing the fact that this year, they've already said this might have the highest wind activity for the last four years, and have that tropical storm out there right now, effective June 1, even though your program renews the 1st of October, effective June 1, we've reduced the named windstorm deductible from 3% down to 2%. The effect that that would have on the city if you had like 10 million worth of values involved in the named windstorm, instead of having to pay the first $300,000, you only have to pay the first $200,000. You do get help from FEMA and the state for that retention that they have to pay, but again, let's work with FEMA, we understand is all for the better. The next one is the liability coverages. We do your auto, your general liability, public officials, errors and omissions, which I'm sure that we don't get anything from you guys, and that's $5 million worth of coverage there. We do the statutory workers' compensation and employers' liability up to $3 million as well, and then there's oil and machinery and crime as well. The next slide will show that there's coverages that we place outside of PRM for different members, flood insurance, which is pretty relevant right now. We also do your pollution, sorry, your cyber liability as well, and statutory AD&amp;D. So there's the other coverages that we take care of outside of PRM. The benefits of being a member, we do have the broadest insurance coverages available. We compare our policies with the other markets out there. We make sure that we've got the broadest and most cost-effective. We have good claims handling, loss control services as well, which the city takes good use of, and we have hotlines as well, as you can see there, I won't go over all of One thing that there is, though, is that we have people on our staff who've been around since 1987, since the pool started, so we know the longevity of the pool, and since Oviedo's been a member as well. We see some big differences in coverages. One of the things that I mentioned, we don't see 2% named windstorm, and commonly from the competitors, the fact you've got that is a help as well. This isn't too easy to see, but you'll see here on your exposures, property has gone up since 2010 by about 42%. Vehicles have gone up, employees have gone down a little bit since that period. What that means overall since 2008, as Steve said, we've had 25% increase in exposures, but overall, an 18% reduction in the rate. And PRM itself, from the surplus that they accumulate, have given back over $550,000 to the city over that period as well to help with your premiums. Do you have any questions at all?
Any questions, council?
No.
Doing good.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see that your total premiums have gone up only 6%, it looks like, in seven years. Is that true?
Correct.
Is that what I'm looking at?
Yep. And that's while the exposures have gone up 25%. So your values have gone from 60 million to 60 million total insurable values to 86 million in total insurable values in that same period.
And the premium's only gone up 6.5%?
Correct.
Oh, good job. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is the new police officer introductions. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you, and I'm sure you're going to turn it over to the chief.
Yes, Mayor. This is a request to have our newly hired police officers to introduce them to city council, and I will turn it over to Chief Chet now.
Chief, how are you?
I am good. Mayor, good evening, council members. Tonight, I'd like to introduce our two newest officers, and I'm going to let them introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about themselves.
This is a test, you know. You're still on probation, so.
For a while. My name's Richard Scoville, originally from Massachusetts. I've lived in the central Florida area for about 15 years now. I know Oviedo very well. Just live over in Chuliot, up a snow hill, so I know Oviedo very well. Private law enforcement experience with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. Did intelligence, I was an analyst over there, oh, four years, primarily domestic security cases. After a certain amount of time, I really wanted to be sworn and get out there, and felt Oviedo was the place to be, so I'm very excited to be here.
Red Sox fan?
Huge Red Sox fan. And Patriots.
What about the MIT Beavers? You fans of them?
They're a little lower down on the list.
Can I ask a real police question now? Did you go to Seminole State College?
I did not. For the academy, I went to Valencia.
Valencia. When did you graduate?
In November.
November.
2015.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'd like to start it off. What teams are you rooting for?
Fan of the Tampa Bay Bucks. I'm originally from Philadelphia, so I'm a big, uh...
Eagles.
Don't even say Eagles. Yeah. The two, yeah.
You're talking to a dais of New Yorkers. Just lie and say the New York Yankees or something.
Nets Islanders, Yanks.
Penn State guy.
Actually, Michigan. Yeah, Penn State's the home team, though. I'm sorry. My name's Ed Heim. I recently, I was hired in May here. Within a four-day span, I actually completed my degree from UCF, so I graduated from UCF, and a couple days later, I was hired here. So May was a very good month for me.
Good for you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
What is your degree in?
Political science with pre-law concentration.
Awesome.
I came here from TSA, worked for TSA, and prior to that, I was a mail carrier for the postal service, so I have a lot of experience still with the public. I live here in Oviedo myself. I've lived in the Seminole County area for almost all my life, since the age of five. Lived in Castleberry, and then I bought a home in Oviedo. So glad to be here. I think being a resident myself is very important, so I'm excited and grateful.
Wonderful.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Everybody give a round of applause, so I know...
Those are our two newest officers. The people we hired before them are thankful they're not the bottom one on the seniority list anymore. But I think we hired a couple of good officers with some good backgrounds, and they'll do well for the department and the city.
Well, chief, I hope to have many, many years of safe service.
I would agree with that.
Excellent. Thank you, chief. Any other questions for chief?
Nope.
Nope? Thank you, chief. Thank you, guys. Good luck to you. Stay safe. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes for our May 16 regular session and our May 23 budget work session. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in multiple seconds. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our next item of business, it's the public comment portion of the meeting. This is the chance for the audience to address us on any items that are not on our agenda or do not have public comment on our agenda. I do have one written request this evening, and that is, I will call that one first, and that's from Ms. Deborah Schaefer.
Pass it down.
One to the clerk.
Good evening, council. Deborah Schaefer, Chuliot, Florida. Hey, go Pats and Red Sox. First, I want to thank you all for your letter opposing crossing the ECON. I really appreciate that. It was wonderful that you all agreed on that. I just want to remind you that the meeting in Orange County is the 14th, and that we get with Seminole to coordinate who is going to that meeting.
We have been coordinating, Mr. Cobb.
Okay, perfect. Just a reminder, I know you guys get busy.
Thank you.
What I just passed out to you, I just want to talk to you briefly about. Over a year ago, I sat with your engineers talking about the proposed Publix that we had heard about for a while, and at that time, we were kind of told, hey, it's a pipe dream. Probably isn't going to happen. So I just started emailing Oviedo over the period of time, probably every few months, going, hey, what's going on? Hey, what's going on? And basically, nothing. Two months ago, we found out that there was a brown field that was being cleaned up, and that was wonderful. So I figured, well, if they're doing the brown field, they've got to be doing, getting serious about this Publix, so I contacted the city. Still kind of didn't have a whole lot of information, so decided to get with the developer and meet with the developer, and did that probably now three weeks ago, and to my surprise, everything had already been planned, designed, and done. So you guys are looking at your new Publix, which you all may love, and that's wonderful. It is your city, but I kind of feel a wee bit disrespected, not only myself, but Jay Zimbauer, who really would have liked to at least been included in discussions in this before. That was kind of the final product that we got. And that's all I needed to say about it, and good luck with the Publix, and I hope it all works out well. Thank you.
See, on June 14th. That is the end of the written request. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address council at this time? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion and move on to the consent agenda. Before we move on to the consent agenda, however, there has been a request from staff that we remove item number six, which is Resolution Number 3192-16, from the consent agenda. I believe there were some Scribner errors in the report that are greater than what can be fixed this evening, and they'll be bringing that back to us at a later date. Do I have consensus of council to remove item six?
Yes.
All righty, so item six is off. So consent agenda now is item five and then seven through 14. What is the pleasure of council?
Make motion to adopt consent agenda?
Second.
We have motion and second on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
No.
Councilman Britton, you good?
I'm good.
All righty. Hearing none, I'll call the vote. The motion is to adopt the consent agenda, and that is item five and then seven through 14. What is the pleasure of council?
Make motion to adopt consent agenda?
Second.
We have motion and second on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
No.
Councilman Britton, you good?
I'm good.
All righty. Hearing none, I'll call the vote. The motion is to adopt the consent agenda, and that is item five and then seven through 14. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to resolutions, let's see, we have no public hearings, no first reading of ordinances, so we have Resolution Number 3205-16, and that is a site development order number 462-16. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's request is requested to approve Site Development Order Number 462-16 for a 51-lot, single-family townhome residential development currently named Oviedo on the Park Lot 12. This site development order replaces Site Development Order Number 443-15, which was for a 49-lot townhome residential development on the same property. It was approved by city council on May 4, 2015. The, and on April 4, 2016, the city council extended Site Development Order 443-15. The proposed development is located on the east side of Oviedo Boulevard, approximately 581 feet north of Center Lake Lane. The total area is about 5.47 acres. The applicant, as a stated, proposes to construct 51 single-family residential townhomes at a density of around 11 lots per acre. The height of the buildings will be 30 feet, three stories, and the development will also include a private residential pool area. They will be providing parking at a rate of four parking spaces per townhome unit, with two spaces located within the attached garages and two spaces within the driveways. The development will include an additional 10 parking spaces on-site, and will have approximately 31 parking spaces on-street along Oviedo Boulevard. Concurrence has been satisfied. There are a number of architectural deviations that will be required for this. Dr. Correa is here tonight, and she can address any questions you may have regarding the architectural deviations. Staff recommends approval of the site development order along with the architectural deviations. It's recommended that the city council adopt Resolution Number 3205-16.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb, is the applicant here? And if so, does the applicant have presentation?
Good evening.
Good evening, Paul. How are you?
Very well.
Name and address for the record. You know the drill.
Yeah, Paul Yeargain with Nesseng &amp; Brussels Incorporated. Our office is at 225 East Robinson Streets, Suite 300, Orlando, Florida. So we don't have a formal presentation, but what we would like to do is to have the council consider an additional deviation that was presented to staff, and that is regarding a project sign. So I have some handouts for you.
Paul, is that request in our package?
This was...
That's okay.
This was not included in your package?
Correct. Thank you, Paul.
So if you look on the very bottom, under project sign, what the applicant is requesting is a three-foot and one-inch deviation from the standard six-foot linear foot maximum sign height. So the total sign height would be nine foot, one inch. It's a 52% deviation. That would be consistent with the David Weekly project at the preserve at Oviedo on the Park, as well as the other signs that are around...
Paul, I'm sorry. You're just talking about like that little V sign that you're going to put there that's going to say townhomes for sale here, starting at...
No, it's a, it's a, it's a community sign.
Okay.
It's an ancient sign to the community.
All right. So you're talking about the community sign that is going to, and is the one that's being proposed for this going to be exactly like the ones that are at Oviedo on the Park already, with the light tower?
Correct.
And the brick base and...
Correct.
Okay. All right, so it's going to look exactly the same, we're just trying to get it out of the way here rather than coming back?
Correct. That's correct.
Is council clear on what they're requesting?
Yes.
Council, have any questions of the applicant for that request? Is it going to be placed right out the front entranceway of your project, just like the other?
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else, Paul?
That's all.
All right, just hang on one second. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Yeargain?
It's going to match existing signs already in the neighborhood.
It's going to ma, I mean, it's...
Size and architecture.
Size and architecture is going to match.
Right, so just for clarity again, it's going to be that light tower, like is all over Oviedo on the Park. Ashton's got one, David Weekly's got one, we've got them entering in with the little round sign, and it's going to say, do you have a picture of it? Okay. All righty, I think we're good. Is council good? Dr. Correa is going to explain it further to us, Paul. Paul will gladly sit down on that note.
This sign was actually approved in the previous site plan, that was for the same site, and it matches the Oviedo on the Park signage. You have actually, on the plans, it is shown the sign in the hardscape plans, so it's exactly what we approved for the others, but we realized that the other, the previous one required deviation, and we did not include the deviation here, so they are requesting to include now on the plans.
So staff doesn't have any issue with what they're...
No, we, we...
It's all consistent?
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Correa, why don't you hang on just a quick moment? I know we're under applicant presentation, but does anybody have any, hmm, you know what? We'll come back to it. Let me get a motion first. Guys, you have any other presentations tonight from the applicant? We're good? Paul, I didn't mean to shoo you off. Dr. Correa was answering your question. Anything else to present to council before I go to public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right. I have no written request on this item, but as always, I do open it up briefly. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council on this item? Seeing, hearing none, I'm closing public comment, and I'll move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Make motion to adopt Resolution 3205-16?
Second.
Motion second. Councilman, Deputy Mayor Shank, you have the floor.
I'll pass right now.
Councilman Hankin?
I think it looks great. I know there was a lot of, a lot of deviations to it, but they were all, in my mind, minor. The picture of the finished product, I think, is going to be a pretty nice addition out there, so I'm, I'm in favor. It's good.
Okay. Councilman Britton?
I'll echo that, and I just would like to ask Brian or maybe Dr. Correa, staff is fully, concurs with the deviations? And I assume these comments addressing them are from staff?
Dr. Correa, why don't you come on up and answer that for us?
And I'm looking at, looking at one of the attachments. Attachment...
Want to say the elevations?
RES 325.
It's attachment...
Attachment 5, I'm sorry.
Attachment 4 are the facade elevations.
I'm looking at attachment 5.
Which will be the justification?
Yes.
Well, we have all the, we have listed all the deviations. Basically, there are two sets of deviations, one for the material percentage and the other one for finistration. And these are deviations to the zoning progress, right, with the presentation that we did that did not have a very, it's not really detailed, so some of the deviations would not really apply when we have the standards. For instance, the rear facade elevations will not have the, as we are proposing, and I shared with you the preliminary draft, right, last week, we don't have percentage material for the rear facades. But here, we are enforcing the zoning progress, so we'll ask as a deviation. So basically, the deviations are for materials and for finistrations. We are okay with the, with the, we are supporting the project. I think the intent was to have a nice, you know, project in the end with a nice character, so we, we thought that we had a lot of back and forth with the applicants, and we are okay. Some of the, in italics in the memo, the justification come from the applicant, but we are supporting the deviations.
Okay. So this is part of, I'll call it the migration from the old standard to the new zoning progress.
Yes, these are already, we are applying the new standards. These are already, we are applying the new standards.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure you're on board, the applicant's on board with this stuff. Okay. Thanks.
Anything else?
Any other questions for Dr. Correa while she's there? Thank you. Councilwoman, anything good?
No.
Is it possible to get attachment number three up on the monitors? Either that, or you can go in the back and bring out the board. And we're talking about a beautiful project, and everyone in the audience doesn't have a picture of it, so it'd be nice if they can see. Guys, just as easy, we can go get the easel in the back. If it's easier. Oh, well, I just want the board. That's all. Sit down, Steve.
They put the pictures up. They put a picture up.
Maybe Megan could take a picture of it and put it on Facebook.
Thank you, guys. We still have something up there as a point of reference as to the project being proposed. Dr. Correa, if I can just ask you one other question. I know a lot of work has been going into the design standards for townhomes and the architectural standards throughout the city, so, I mean, obviously, this looks like it's meeting or exceeding the goal of the work in progress. You would agree?
I do. I do. I mean, the materials, I mean, they did not... They required some deviations, but I think they managed to bring different sidings, so it will... We have the different articulation that we wanted. We have, I think, a good level of finistration. And I think the material, we have now a standard that is 40 percent maximum of siding, so they exceed that. But they provided two different siding, types of siding. So in the end, I mean, the result, I think, is still a very good result.
Well, in my opinion, it looks very nice. I just wanted to make sure that it's meeting...
We like the project, too.
Great. Any other questions for Dr. Correa? Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant?
No. Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
And I agree. I love it. I think that they did add a lot with the zoning in progress. They took a lot on and ended a lot. If... I'll only say one thing at the front. Differentiation, whether it's paint, a little trim to differentiate the units, would be the only thing I'd add to anything, so that it seems more of a differentiation in units since they're townhomes, to me. And that's personal. That's just a personal thing. It differentiates the units better, which, to me, provides a better look and differentiates that from, I'm going to say, when the apartments come across the street or apartments, it just differentiates that they're separate units a little more. That's all. But I think it looks fantastic. I know you guys have worked very hard with staff, and I appreciate staff's time and your time in putting in all the extra work and the movement that is there. I really appreciate it.
Anything else? We have a motion on table to adopt. It is Resolution Number 3205-16. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, could I just clarify one thing? I just want to make sure that the requested deviation for the sign, that's included within the motion. I assume that it is.
You want us to redo it? What do you want from us?
I'm fine with it. I'm good. I just wanted to just confirm with you.
Okay. Sorry about that. All righty, moving along, we're up to our discussion item, which is the Public Art Initiative. Mr. Cobb, I'll go to you for an introduction, and then we'll take it over from there.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the Council to discuss and provide direction regarding a public art initiative. During the mayor's report at the May 16 meeting, he mentioned that he'd been approached by Mr. Brian Smith regarding starting a policy for public art in the city. And he has a particular interest in the traffic circle on Oviedo Boulevard, just north of Oviedo on the Park. He has talked about possibly establishing a committee to develop a public policy to... for the installation of public art within the city. As part of our research, we did provide you with some public art initiatives from other cities. During the meeting, when Mr. Colbert was here at the last meeting, the first thing he turned to me and said, "The City of Sanford has also started an initiative," so we got some information from them on where they are with their program. The City of Clearwater also has a good program, and Dr. Correa found a program in the City of Winter Park. And so we would like to know what you would like us to do as far as this type of initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. And I think Mr. Smith is here. Mr. Smith, why don't you come on up and just... You and I had a nice conversation. Why don't you just inform the Council on your vision?
Yes, sir. I want to say thank you first for adding this as a discussion item tonight.
I'm sorry. I should have asked. Name and address for the record first.
Oh, sorry. Brian Smith. My address is 2311 Pine Brook Court, Oviedo 32766, over in the Riverside neighborhood. My initial discussion with the mayor was brought about by the fact that, you know, I've enjoyed watching all of the new development in Oviedo on the Park. I drive down Oviedo Boulevard every day on my way to work at the Citizens Bank of Florida. And while going down Oviedo Boulevard and through that roundabout, I just couldn't help but feel that something was missing there. And although I love, you know, the new development, I think... Excuse me. It's also important that we remember the history of Oviedo, and I think that art, public art, is a great way to do that. And that's what kind of inspired me to reach out to the mayor. Not only, you know, the monument for the roundabout, but I think future projects as well that we might could come up with could also, you know, reach the same goal.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Smith? No? Thank you, Brian. Council, if it's okay with you, I'll just kind of start off what I think this can turn into, and we touched briefly on it when I brought it up at the last meeting. And staff, first, I want to thank you very much for putting together the package that you did get us. I mean, the... What Sanford's working on, Winter Park has, and clearly, I think it was Clearwater, is miles ahead of everybody on the package that was included from them. That's almost 100 pages or so of public art initiative that they have. But, you know, when first approached by this, it sort of intrigued me because it was always something that we thought of throughout the process of creating not only Oviedo on the Park, but the redevelopment of the historic downtown, that, you know, we would somehow one day create and bring art, public art, into the mix. And when Mr. Smith approached me and I approached Mr. Cobb, it was brought to my attention that we don't even have any policies for public art. They just don't exist. So, you know, right now, we don't have anything that says what we could do, what the public could do. We have a funding mechanism set up, or a fundraising mechanism set up, I should say, in Friends of Oviedo, our 501(c)(3), but even if fundraising were to occur and we wanted to do something, we don't have any guidelines for it. So briefly, getting to the point, what I'd like to see us do is create a committee of, you know, five, seven members, whatever we feel is appropriate. Appoint a member of council as well to the committee, and let the committee get together and sort of sit, talk, discuss, compare, and come up with a public art policy for us that we can incorporate into our codes and policies. So then that way, we can take this to the next step, to the next level, because there are many initiatives done in Orlando, Winter Park, other areas, that have these beautiful public spaces that we're creating. And not only have we created a great public space at Oviedo on the Park, you know, we have in the historic downtown in the future, we've been assembling all that land in and around the old post office that we own as another public space. And, you know, exactly what that public space is going to turn into in the future hasn't been fully vetted and decided, but as we were talking about during our CRA meeting, we will have visioning and such for that, but that was always envisioned in the original plan as being more green space and not being an active park, similar to what we have at Oviedo on the Park. So anyway, with consensus, I'd like staff to bring back to us, maybe next meeting, meeting after, a list of appointees. Maybe we can ask the public to see who would like to be on the committee. I mean, I have some ideas. I mean, obviously, I think Mr. Smith should be on the committee. I think we should reach out to... Well, let me back that up. I have reached out to him, and he spoke to Mr. Cobb. I mean, former council member Chris Jepson, the United Arts. I mean, there's... That was his career. I mean, there's a perfect person to be on this council. We have local artists throughout the community. We have Dell Seaman, Karen Dom, Linda Gassell, who have all reached out to me since this first became public, who would like to serve. I think right here, sitting on our council, with no offense to the other three or myself, but the most artistic of us all is Councilman Schenck, or Deputy Mayor Schenck. I think, you know, that would... This would be perfect for him to take on, maybe even not only in his time left, but beyond. So that's kind of my vision that I had for it, but I'd like to hear from everybody else. And whoever wants to start, jump in. Are you good, Keith?
I'm good. I'll start. I think it's a good idea, and I think getting a committee together is a good start. And I will tell you, from my experiences with Calno, if you go to Castleberry, they've got a very good program set up up there. They did some great stuff with some trees that had to come down. They had a guy come in and actually reshape the stumps into some very, very pretty artwork. So they have some ideas. I was just thinking of Catherine Townsend, who we all know with the Seminole...
Oh, Seminole County Arts. Perfect.
Arts. So I think there's a lot of folks we could get ideas from, and then bring them in and focus on what we want as our own brand or our own mark that we want to make, so...
Great.
Go for it.
Councilman Henken, you good?
I am good. I think it's something that, you know, will enhance the city. I'm happy that the idea was born out in Riverside. Riverside. I think some of the best ideas come out of that place in the last few years. So Brian, good job, but yeah...
Or we could say it's the first good idea to come out of Riverside.
No. No. Councilman Schenck, I think you were right, would be the perfect one. He is very artistic and for his time left, or maybe if he changes his mind. But it's all good. March on.
Councilwoman?
Yep. I agree. I think it's a great idea. Thank you for bringing that forward, and I'm for it 100 percent. Deputy Mayor Schenck will be a good leader in that.
I appreciate being thought of and for it, and I would really enjoy it probably. I think that's something I would look forward to, like I said, now and after term, would be something I could continue on and do.
Great. Yeah, because it would involve, you know, it's going to be a few sets of meetings and, you know, setting policy. I mean, that's what we have to come up with first, you know, before we can do anything. And included in the packet, I don't know if you saw the vision that Brian had for the traffic circle with the celery stalk and everything.
Cere, celery, and...
It's... Yeah, it was a great idea, and I'm glad that everybody is on board. So, Mr. Cobb, we rattled off one, two, three, four, five, six different names that I got, and then with Deputy Mayor Schenck, that would make a committee of seven. Could we possibly reach out to the six and see if they'd be willing to serve?
Yes, sir. We'd be happy to.
Thank you. Is that okay with Council? With the six names that came up? Just to go through them again, we had the names mentioned were Catherine Townsend, which, I mean, that's what she does with Seminole County, Dell Seaman, Karen Dom, Linda Gassell, Christopher Jepson, Brian Smith, and Deputy Mayor Schenck. I think we have two members already, right? Brian, you're willing to serve. There you go. All righty, great. Is there anything else on this item?
No, sir.
No? All righty. Sorry. Let me get up to the... Back to the agenda, and we'll move on. We are up to, I think, reports already.
Reports.
Yes, we are. Mr. Cobb, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one thing. This Friday will be our first of, I believe, three comedy shows at Cultural Center. It's called the I-4 Comedy Tour. Yeah, I-4 Comedy Tour. There'll be three comedians this Friday, and just wanted to remind Council that that'll be happening. That's all I have.
Great. Mr. Greit, do you have anything for us this evening?
I'll remain silent this evening, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, all's quiet on the legal front. We like to hear that. All right. Deputy Mayor Schenck, you're up.
First, I wanted to say it was a great Memorial Day celebration ceremony that, A, Lars and everybody put on. Appreciate your efforts and everybody else's efforts. All those that came out to speak, all those that came out to give service, it was wonderful. The barbecue blowout was also another wonderful...
Who's got your dog tags?
We also had a run. I think he left a...
Oh, can I just jump in on the run?
Yeah.
I would like to say that I beat Britain by five seconds.
You did beat Britain. I saw that.
That's a 40-something guy talking about an almost 60-something guy.
Forty? Forty?
Are you in your 50s?
53.
Oh, all right.
And they both creamed me, so... But that was determined way beforehand.
It was fun.
It was a good one. Actually, it was a very good turnout. It really was a very good turnout. Staff did a great job. Everybody who participated helped out. It really was a fun event, a great morning to do it. A lot more shade. It's funny how you proceed, you know, the run. It's new downtown, you know, but you know what? It was really... Running up and down Oviedo Boulevard was very shady. The only hotspots were the east-west runs down the bike path and when you're running, you know, start and finish. Otherwise, it was really a nice, good place to run and do it. So it actually was very well. A lot of staff members came out and ran also. A lot of staff came out and ran, supporting for the city, you know. It was very, very fun. So that's it. I'll let everybody else do some other stuff. Thanks.
Councilmember Henken?
I'm good tonight, Mayor.
Perfect. Councilwoman Drago?
I'm good tonight.
Nice.
Britain's good?
Britain, you good? Well, we don't want to hear about Calno. No one cares about Calno.
Speaking of culture, I think you all know that I... The... My family's version of hee-haw is called Prairie Home Companion. It's a Friday night ritual. A guy, a fellow named Garrison Keeler, has been doing this show for 40-some-odd years, and his last show is coming up, I think, on July 1st. I'm not quite sure of that, but I thought it might be pretty cool if we can somehow get with the radio station and broadcast it from Oviedo on the Park and let folks come out and listen to that last show. Because if you've never heard him, he's a great storyteller, and he'll make you laugh. He'll probably make you mad because he's not immune to some political jokes, but it's been a Friday or Saturday night, Sunday morning ritual for me, and I'm going to miss that show, so...
What day is it? Is that show?
I'm looking here. It says July 1st, which I think is a Friday. And now, it's usually on Saturday evening, so we'd have to go check with the radio station on when that is, so...
I have no objection. Anybody else?
I think it's a great idea.
Do you know who he's talking about?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I've always considered...
Great storyteller.
Oviedo, Florida's little Lake Wobegon, which is the fictional town he talks about in his story. So if you hear those stories, you'll recognize some of us in it.
Well, you should make it into a wine and cheese event out on the lawn.
There you go. As a matter of fact, I got an email from a fellow named Steve Manos, who's a wine distributor, goes to church with us, who would like to do exactly that. If we could pull it together in time, I think that would be a great idea.
Well, you're in charge.
Brian?
Thank you for volunteering.
We'll talk tomorrow? I'm not getting a warming fuzz from Brian.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. All the events were great. The barbecue blowout was great. I sent the band, Eli...What was Eli's last name?
Um, no, I forgot.
From Lakeland, a great little guy band. I said, "You guys need to come out here."
They were good.
And it wasn't Eli Whitney, but it was something like that, but I gave...Got his card, and I sent it to Drew, so if there's a chance we can get them back. Food was good. The entertainment was good. The weather was actually not too bad, so good time.
Yes, it was.
It was fun.
That's it?
That's it.
Unless you wanna hear about Calno?
No. Are they disbanding it?
No.
No. Well, then we don't wanna hear about it. You just tell us when it's being disbanded. Anything else? Anything else, Councilman? You good?
Mr. Mayor, are you gonna talk about the barbecue judging?
I was gonna mention that. I mean, the kids' barbecue judging was a lot of fun. Councilwoman Drago and I got to participate in that at the barbecue blowout. It's the first time they did it this year. They had about ten teams out?
Yep.
Of youngsters who got to actually cook with a pit master, and then we got to sample the food, and we...Not only do we get...It wasn't just barbecue. They had to cook steaks. They were cooking lobster, shrimp. I hadn't eaten so much food in a long time.
He was hurting the next day. He was complaining.
Yes.
And the food was so good, but oh my gosh, it was too much.
Yeah, but then I went back Saturday for more barbecue, so it was an excellent event. The Chamber does a great job with that, and city staff does a great job supporting that. I mean, most don't realize what goes into making that event happen. I mean, because it's not just the tents and the teams that come in, but the city runs a whole water network for the teams to use. All the piping gets run, all the potable water is supplied by us, so a big effort goes into the barbecue blowout each and every year. And I'm assuming we're having our Fourth of July and July fourth again this year. Is that the date? We usually do it July fourth.
Yes, sir.
All right. So that's gonna be Monday, July fourth, over at the mall?
At the mall.
Fireworks at nine-ish as usual?
Yes, sir.
Vent probably opens four-ish, five-ish?
I think so. It's around four or five.
Four or five, something like that, but we hope everybody will come out to the mall and celebrate Fourth of July with us. The fireworks are always a lot of fun, and just make sure you mark that in your calendar. With that being said, is there anything else for the good of the order before I go into future meeting dates? Mr. Cobb, anything?
No, sir.
All righty. Our future meeting dates, we have Monday, June twentieth, at six-thirty P.M. is a regular session. Monday, June twenty-seventh, five-thirty P.M., we have a budget workshop. July fourth, Monday, which I just announced, we will not have a meeting that evening because we'll be all enjoying the fireworks. Monday, July eight...Excuse me. Monday, July eighteenth will be our only July meeting. That's at six-thirty P.M. Then we have Monday, August first, six-thirty P.M. With that being said, it is about twenty-five after, and we are adjourned.